Okay, it is 7:01. We will call this meeting to order. We have a quorum of the board present, so you will stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, in the absence of Mary Kay, our board clerk will be taking care of the roll call. Kristin, please.
It's in here, just one second, sorry.
Take your time.
Thanks. Dr. Dave Bardo.
Present.
Trina Bornamond. Dr. Noel Deep.
Jill Maddick Nelson.
Here.
Krista Matt Miller is here. Andy Mary.
Present.
Danny Pyatt.
Here.
Angie Schreiber. J.D. Strater.
Okay, we have a quorum of the board present, so we will take care of the business at hand tonight. I'll let the record reflect that J.D. did come in. First item on the agenda is number two, citizens and delegates' report. But before we jump into there, I want to say to permit fair and orderly public expression, the board shall provide a period for public participation at every regular board meeting and publish rules to govern such participation in board meetings. The presiding officer of each board meeting at which public participation is permitted shall administer the rules of the board for its conduct. The presiding officer shall be guided by the following rules. Public participation shall be permitted before the board takes official action on any issue of substance. Attendees must register their intention to participate in the public portion of the meeting upon their arrival at the meeting. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface their comments by an announcement of their name and group affiliation if and when appropriate. Each statement made by the participant shall be limited to five minutes duration. And tonight, in Mary Kay's absence, Dustin will have a countdown timer on the screen so everybody can watch the screen for that countdown of five minutes. And then later in the meeting, the 10 minutes for the speakers. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Request any individual to leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum. Request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when that person's conduct interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting or call for recess or an adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to warrant such action. The portion of public comment for participation of the public is invited to be limited to 60 minutes unless extended by a vote of the board. And I will add, if we would please silence all cell phones, please. Having said that, we'll go to student representatives' report. And in the absence of our student representatives, Dr. Sprague is going to be reading their report.
In the area of academics, juniors are preparing to take their ACT on March 14th. The eighth grade will be visiting the school forest. Ninth and 10th grades are attending some enrichment sessions with community and staff members. And the 12th grade is excused if they turn in their portfolio practice forms by February 24th. Sophomores have a field trip to UW-Green Bay on March 8th, and field trip forms are due on March 3rd. For FFA week, the assembly had a milk-chugging contest, potato sack race, kiss the mystery animal, and find the cow in the haystack. Valentine's Day brought a dress-up week, and Decca sold roses and carnations. The junior class has created a committee and set a date for prom, April 29th, with a "Play Your Cards Right" theme. Boys' basketball plays tonight against Merrill for their first round of playoffs at 7 o'clock. That's why Mr. Rogers is not here. Girls' basketball lost their game against Merrill on Friday in the first round of the playoffs. Boys' bowling is headed to state as well as girls' bowling with an 8-2 and 9-1 record respectively. We're hoping for them to pick up another state title. Hockey ended their season on the 16th of February with a loss to Rhinelander, but they had a great season ending with a 10-15 record and over 100 goals started on the season. Girls' gymnastics, no report tonight, but I do believe I read Sidney Shostak is heading to state.
Andrea.
Andrea, thank you.
In one event.
In one event, thank you. And Alex and Olivia Hoffrichter took third and fourth place at the girls' wrestling state tournament in their respective weight classes. Congratulations to them. And that concludes the student report.
Okay, we wanted to thank Lucy Slominski and Ava Tetro for sending that report in in their absence today due to the fact of moving the board meeting because of the weather yesterday. So we will be moving to item B, public comment. J.D., can you get the book for me, or see if anybody's on there? Thank you, sir. Okay, we have one person that has signed up, and Mackenzie Williams. Mackenzie?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mackenzie. I am the mother of a third-grade student at North Elementary. It has been brought to my attention that the Unified School District of Anago employs a teacher who does not wish to go by the title Mrs., Miss, or Mister. They prefer the title MX, MX dot, which is pronounced mix. The apparent gender-neutral mix is used as a title for those who do not identify as being a particular gender or for people who simply do not want to be identified by gender. My student was told to use this title when speaking to and/or referring to that teacher. After speaking with other parents who have students in the Anago School District, not only at North Elementary, but the other elementary schools as well, they were told the same, to use the title mix towards the same individual. Are the students being explained the meaning of this title? When asked why they can't call their teacher Mrs., Mister, or Miss, are they being told that their teacher is gender-neutral? What are or will be the repercussions if students don't want to use this title? Why is this title allowed to be used in the Anago School District when it is such a conflicting interest for many, including the students? The use of this title is causing more questions than answers for our young students. And quite frankly, these are not questions that should be answered by the schools, but by the parents at home with their own discretion. Why are we even putting our young children in these difficult situations at school to ask such questions? They are children. They will ask questions. They always ask questions. That is how they learn. They're young, curious minds are entitled to ask questions. My question is, why is the Anago School District telling students to use this title when it leaves so much room for error? In my opinion, we should let our children be children and not let them worry about adult issues such as a gender-confused teacher. I ask the Anago School District to stick with the basic curriculum of English, Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Studies and leave the psychological issues of our adults out of our schools. Please stop pushing political correctness on our children. They grow up way too fast the way it is. I would also like to add, I most definitely not saying anything bad about North Elementary. My son has had many marvelous and successful years there. All of their staff is amazing and phenomenal. Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, for coming and bringing that to the board tonight. Okay, moving on to item three, consent agenda. I will be looking for a motion for approval of agenda, minutes, financial reports, district retirements, resignations, and new hires.
I'll make a motion. I move the board approve the agenda minutes from January 23rd, 2023, Board of Education meeting in January 23 and 30, 2023, Special Board of Education meeting. February committee meetings, minutes, district retirement, resignations, and new hire reports, requests for overnight travel, financial reports for January 2023, consideration of current bills, checks number 6582 through 6720 in the amount of $216,793.33. ACH number 222300730 through 222300889 in the amount of $823,215.05 and one wire transfer in the amount of $18,613.85 for a total of $1,058,622.23. I also need to go on record that I will be abstaining on check number 6684.
Okay, motion has been made. Dr. Bardo, would you like to speak to that motion?
No, thank you.
Motion has been made. Any discussion?
I would just like to make it known that I am abstaining from check number 6695.
6695. Any other questions, comments?
I would just like to ask that the curriculum report and the policy committee report be removed from the consent agenda and given their own spot on the agenda. Is that how we do it?
Yes, sir. The curriculum and the policy committee. We will move those down to the bottom of the agenda. So.
Curriculum becomes M.
Yes, sir.
Policy becomes N.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, we will now take a vote. The voting device is open. If you're in favor of the motion, yes. If you're not in favor, no. If you want abstain, three. Would anybody like to change their vote? Okay, the vote is now closed. Dustin. All in favor, the motion carries. Moving on to item four, board action, letter A. Consideration of a resolution to authorize a waiver request of requirement in Wisconsin statute PI 27.03, commencement of school term. I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board authorize a waiver request of requirement in Wisconsin statute PI 27.03, commencement of school term.
Motion has been made. Jill, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, no.
Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Dr. Bardo.
For those at home, basically, this allows us to start before Labor Day with our school calendar.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Dr. Sprague, you can also clarify that we've done this the last two years, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, this will be the third.
Okay. Hearing no other discussion, the voting device is open. If you're in favor of, yes. If you're not in favor, no, or you may abstain. Okay, anybody like to change their vote?
Sorry, I'm distracting.
Okay, the vote is now closed, Dustin. And the motion carries and passes. Item letter B, consideration to approve WIAA co-op team renewal, Wittenberg-Burnhamwood hockey. I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board approve the WIAA co-op team renewal with Wittenberg-Burnhamwood hockey as presented.
Motion has been made. Jill, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would just add that it is for the boys' hockey program.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment, discussion, question? Hearing and seeing no comments, the voting machine is now open. If you're in favor of, yes. If you're not, no, or you can abstain. Would anybody like to change their vote? Okay, the vote is now closed, and the motion passes and it carries. Letter C, consideration to approve Anago Hockey Association Agreement. I will be looking for a motion.
McKenna Aquatic Center Agreement as presented.
Motion has been made. Jill, would you like to speak to the motion?
This is attached, I believe, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So I'll just point out, the agreement user fees is $87 an hour for the use from January 1 through December 31st. Within that agreement, the days and times of use is Monday and Wednesdays from 12 until 3 or as arranged with the Aquatic Center Director. So it's also discussed in finance committee with Dr. Sprague following up with comparables of what other districts have for their charges or agreements with aquatic centers. And I appreciate you for sharing that. So that's all I have to add.
Dr. Bardo?
The $87 per hour is for rehabilitation therapy purposes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, the voting device is open. Would anybody like to change their vote? Okay, the voting is now closed, Dustin, and the motion carries. Item G, consideration to approve the 2023 City of Anago Ball Field Agreement. I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board approve the 2023 City of Anago Ball Field Agreement. It's something we do every year.
Hold one second. The motion has been made. Dr. Bardo, would you like to speak to that motion?
Sorry, I got going too quick. The cost is $1,900 for the season for all the fields being used by the school district.
Any other discussion?
Question, what are the days that the agreement at the beginning of it doesn't identify? This agreement is made and entered into blank day of. What, do we know dates or how long that's for?
I don't have it here either. Do you know what that is? Would it be the spring?
I would be making an assumption, Jill, but I believe we do this, we approve it every year. So for this season, I would imagine. The spring sports meeting is tomorrow night, so we're just ahead of using the fields, so. And if it is different, I will certainly let the board know.
Basically, we're talking baseball and softball for the high school teams. It's when the snow goes away in April, and hopefully, they can get the fields ready and get games in in April and May during the school season. And then that's what we're paying for.
Number four in the agreement does say for the use of said ball fields for the season. So I feel pretty confident that's what it is. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this agreement with the city for the use of the ball fields for baseball and softball? No other discussion. The voting device is open. Would anybody like to change their vote? Okay, the voting is now closed, Dustin, and the motion carries. Letter H, consideration to approve greenhouse project bids. I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board approve the bid from United Greenhouse in the amount of $114,372 for the greenhouse project.
Motion has been made. Jill, would you like to speak to the motion?
To share appreciation to the hard work staff are putting in for grants and funding sources, so thank you for that.
Any other discussion for this greenhouse project?
So this was, this was brought to the Building and Grounds Committee, and it was discussed, and only is this a better price? It was more in-state workers, and it comes with a project manager who is extremely helpful and always available and continues to help as time goes on. So it was a much better option.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, the voting device is open for the motion on the floor. Would anybody like to change their vote? Okay, the voting is now closed, Dustin, and the motion carries. Letter I, consideration to approve summer responsive classroom training. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the summer responsive classroom training in the amount of $32,900.
Motion has been made. Kristin, would you like to speak to the motion?
I will. So this was at our People's Services Committee. We had two teachers speak very highly of the responsive classroom training. It is going to be paid for by a second-year grant that we already have and then impartial from an additional grant, Heidi's not here, okay, to pay for this training. I appreciate that there is an understanding that behavior is a concern, and that we're moving in the right direction to do something about it.
Any other discussion for the motion on the floor? Any other discussion for the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing no discussion, the voting device is now open. Would anybody like to change their vote? Okay, the voting is now closed, and the motion carries. Item letter J, consideration to approve first reading of policy 6325 procurement federal grant funds. I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board approve the first reading of policy 6325 procurement federal funds, funds revision as presented.
Motion has been made. Jill, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you.
Only we went over all these in.
J.D., go ahead.
In policy committee, and we went over them pretty thoroughly, so I feel good about most of them. I wish I could move that, we'd move them all at once. But can you do that, or is that a?
We will for Neola. This is that standalone one. And what this policy is doing, and J.D., you and I were there at the meeting, according to Katie Ann, and Dr. Sprague was there too, sorry. According to Katie Ann, what this does, this puts us up to date with the DPI, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions about moving the first reading of policy 6325? Hearing no questions, the voting device is now open. Remember, this will come back next month for a second reading. Would anybody like to change their vote? Okay, the voting is now closed, and the motion carries. Item K, consideration to approve first reading of Neola Update Volume 31, number two. I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board approve the first reading of Neola Update Volume 31, number two as presented.
Motion has been made. Jill, would you like to speak to the motion?
This is to remove Tim Prunty's name from the act of policies following his retirement, correct?
That was part of it, and then the policies that are listed there, volume 31, number two for policies, and then the same thing for the administrative guidelines. And as J.D. already pointed out, it was very lengthy. It took the entire time of going through. And I will add that the committee went through this page by page, line by line, almost in some areas, looking at the verbiage that was in the policies.
Julie, did they, or did Mary Kay found out if we needed the administrative guidelines and the policies? Did she get to hear about that?
We did contact Neola and received an answer. I put it in week in review, but basically, we need the policies. Admin guidelines are like a checkpoint to help implement the policies. So the short answer is no.
Do you feel like it adds enough that we should keep them?
Me?
Yeah.
I usually read the policy first, and only if I'm looking for clarification, go to the administrative guideline. But most often, it's the policy that I double-check.
Because they're mostly, they say the same thing, so it's twice the work.
We did pay for, before I was hired, when the board approved Neola, you did pay for the package that includes admin guidelines, so.
So there is theoretically a cheaper package?
So could we bring that, Dr. Sprague, to the next policy committee, what the other option is? With just the policies? And then in having just the policies, would they, would they show enough clarity to all the staff, administration, and teachers included, to explain what the policies are saying? Because I heard you say that you look at policies first, and then you refer to the administrative guidelines for clarity. Any other questions or comments about the first reading of volume one, number two, for both policies and administrative guidelines?
Just, it felt weird to review the policy and then the administrative guideline and see, read the same thing.
I like it was redundant.
Right. And then once in a while, Angie pointed out that they weren't perfectly consistent, and then that was confusing. I can't remember which one off the top of my head, but.
Any other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Bardo?
I have some people who send me stuff that they've looked at and researched. And I'm, on my phone, I have a document about Neola that has 41 footnotes. And when you go down to the references, it's stuff presented by Neola in many of them. Anyway, I'm just going to read a quick couple things. Neola supports the critical race theory influence concept of educational equity at public schools. That's number six. And. Neola supports the critical race theory influence concept of educational equity at public schools. That's number 25. So all I'm asking is that the committee, as they go forward, when we get into things that deal with students and staff, that they take a closer look at language.
Dave, can you give the website where that is at in case board members would like to search that or community members?
Will you just forward it to us, too?
I'll just forward.
Yeah, just forward it.
Yeah, I'll forward, I'll forward it to Dr. Sprague, and she can send it along.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
We just say for anyone who's watching on the public, before we had Neola, the superintendent was supposed to spend hours and hours trying to find out what the law is.
Yeah.
So in theory, we were saving time and money when we did it. I guess it was before the critical race theory time, though, so Dave, your point is taken.
Yeah.
I just, I just think we need to pay attention. And I trust the, that committee.
And if you didn't, you could come back on it.
Probably a no.
Any further questions about the motion on the floor? Hearing no questions or discussion, the voting is now open. This is the first reading. We will have the second reading at our March meeting. Andy, one more time.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Would anybody like to change their vote? No, the voting is closed, Dustin, and the motion carries. Item L is the report of donations. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the following, following donations. $300 from Trader Brother Farms, Inc. for AHS Environmental Club. $200 from Langley Ford for AHS Key Club. $100 from Persons of Anago for AHS Key Club. $500 from Optimist Club of Anago for AHS Softball. $10,000 from Andy and Leon Sheldon Charitable Trust for Clara Armicena Aquatic Center. $100 from Mike and Margaret Hines for the greenhouse project. $588 from Music in the Park for Red Robin Graphics. $100 from Chetan Amels, Inc. for the greenhouse project. $100 from Nancy Hunter. $100 from Kerber Rose S.C. $100 from Stephen and Susan Brettigan. $150 from Bruce Comers. And $220 from various donors for Nabokin Environmental Education Center in memory of Bill Johnson. $150 from Getner Farms, Inc. for greenhouse project. And $200 from Heinz and Plumbing and Heating for greenhouse project. For a total of $12,908.
Motion has been made. Jill, would you like to speak to that motion?
Thank you to all of the generous donors.
And I will concur with that statement. Thank you to our community for all their support. Any other discussion? Hearing none, the voting device is now open. Would anybody like to change their vote? And the voting is now closed. And the motion carries. Okay, moving on to item that we took out of the consent agenda, item M. Dr. Bardo, remind me what M was.
Curriculum Committee Report.
For the Curriculum Committee Report. And I will look to our Curriculum Committee Chairman.
Sure, would you like me to read the report? Is that what you were hoping for?
Yes.
Not really, I just wanted an opportunity to comment on it.
Okay, I was wondering.
So, um, no.
Can I, can I start before you comment?
Sure.
I would like, because I would like to share that Mr. Mary did make the request for the, it was winter benchmarking data to be provided to the full board. And so there was discussion about that with Ms. Doms and I, and then with Mr. Pyatt, too. Ultimately, it was decided to bring it to the committee with an overview or summary brought to the full board. So it was, I did respect your request, and there was thought and discussion around that with the decision to bring it to the committee because it fit the committee. And also, difficulty than distinguishing what, moving forward, other agenda items should be brought to a committee versus the full board general conversation. So I wanted to share that. I did hear you and respect that and brought it for further discussion.
Thanks, Andy, for coming to that meeting. Go ahead and share your comments.
Well, so, um, in the past, benchmarking has been presented to the full board. And I feel that we owe it to our students to, we need to see how they're doing academically more than, often than just looking at the state report card, which really doesn't give us that good of a indication of how they're doing. Ms. Doms and the principals did a great job, and I'm sure they put a lot of work into preparing their presentation. The presentation was positive and showed increasing achievement. I think when we have positive things in our district, we should celebrate it as a board, and we should also show it to our community in a more positive way, in a greater way. I know all the teachers, principals, IAs, are all working hard to improve student achievement. And while the student achievement level may not be yet where we would like it to be, we need to recognize the work that is being done, and we should do that at a full board meeting. There are also people in the community who are interested in how our students are doing academically. And if you look at the recordings of the board meetings versus the committee meetings, there's about four times more people view a board meeting than view a committee meeting. And also, if you went and looked at Amy's presentation, you know, if we're thinking we're doing a great job on audio and visual in those committee meetings, we're not. When you look at the screen on our slides, they're just glary. And I want to give a shout out to Dustin, because at these full board meetings, you pull in the slides and put them on the screen so those at home can see the screen clearly. And then I know Dave mentioned in one of the committee meetings that everybody watching at home gets to watch the back of everybody's head, which isn't the best way to be presenting stuff. So I think, you know, I look at this and I say, yeah, we got a shining light here of something positive going on. And I think of that song, "This Little Light of Mine," and then I think, oh, we try to hide our light under a basket. So I'm going to ask that in the future, all benchmarking presentations be made to the full board. And I would not ask that Ms. Doms and the principals go back and redo the winter benchmark meeting to the full board. I know they got plenty of work to do the way it is. That's all I got.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Dr. Bardo?
Just a thought, Andy. The, if I remember, the presentation took 40 minutes. I would suggest that maybe the way to go is that, following a meeting like we had, that, that presentation be sent to all the board members. So that prior to the next meeting, everybody can see it, go through it, and then allow Mrs. Doms to go before us and maybe pull up the documents that show the amount of kids in each of the four areas. Show the, then show the growth slides. Basically, then you're probably talking eight slides, where Amy could go through those slides and basically, then based on the board going through the information, if they have any further questions, they can ask it. And I think that would solve the time issue and yet get the information that you're talking about out, not only to the board, but to the people. Just a thought.
Are you talking about that for the past presentation or future presentations? Because I appreciate that you, Dr. Sprague, President Pyatt, have thought about how long our meetings are and have done something to make them shorter. I'm going to say you're going to make it in an hour tonight, that's my prediction. And 40 minutes on top of that hour doesn't seem like much compared to the four and five-hour meetings we've been having. And I think, you know, our academic performance, this should be one of the things that we're really focused on as a board.
I just think that Amy, knowing Amy, can shorten it up and give us a presentation that, to help everyone understand the slides and that we're looking for 80% growth and, but that's my opinion. I'm just saying.
My opinion is-
And personally, if, if Amy wants to come back and show us in March and get this information to the entire board and come and make a short presentation, I'm for it. That's me.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the past, I'm concerned about the future.
I appreciate your feedback, and I'm hearing you. And, and the goal was, or the plan was for Amy to provide a five-to-eight-minute overview, but she couldn't be here tonight, so that was anticipated. I do think that you make some valid points and some things that we can explore further, such as even taking that clip and creating a link that we put on our social media and send out in newsletters to parents or something. You're right, a stronger focus on the achievements, that's our primary role is academic achievement. So I think there's things that we could do to highlight and showcase that better. With ultimately, the discussion and determining to bring it to committee was, where do we draw the line? How do we differentiate or distinguish between what should go to a committee versus the full board? So it felt like it kept it consistent by doing that, and then, again, allowing Ms. Doms to provide that summary to, at the Board of Ed meeting. I appreciate your feedback.
So Dr. Sprague, I think what we can do, you and I can talk about this and what we could do to remedy this going forward. At the next time, if you'll put that on our agenda whenever we meet. And then also for the audiovisual, Andy, I have heard other people make comments about committees are not as good, so maybe we can ask our tech guy, Dustin, to help us out and see what we could do to make, enhance the audio and visual better for committee meetings. You know, the one microphone, maybe put the others all out. Let's, let's discuss that with your IT department, see what we can do to enhance that, to make it better. Jill, go ahead.
Appreciate that. I wanted to also provide feedback on that. I typically do re-watch our curriculum and instruction meetings, just to make sure my notes are in order to prepare. I have not had an issue with the audio component. I have had an issue with not the full meeting being recorded and it getting cut off. I would note that, it's my understanding, all of the attachments are provided to the public as well. So I agree, it is, it's a struggle because you can't follow along watching because the glare is really bad. You, you have to have that screen up, though I do appreciate that we have it available so that you can actively follow along. And maybe, I'm not sure if that's, if the attachments are included in all committee agendas, but that would be my recommendation because it does alleviate that barrier a little bit. It's not ideal, but I agree.
I hear Dr. Sprague writing and see her writing all these, so we'll discuss all of this at our next meeting and try to make our committee meetings a little better enhanced. Any other discussion?
The Community Health Foundation had a camera at their last meeting that zoomed in on the person that talked, and I didn't know if it was automatic, but I was on the Zoom end and I thought that was pretty cool. It was Cisco or something. I don't know if that was just their, you know, their version of Zoom or if the camera was separate, but it was interesting. Does it, because how do you get them online for the normal meetings? Do you have to manually switch the slides and like, have, does YouTube do screen recording that it could just share your screen at the same time, or how do you do that?
He makes his TV appearance.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can set it up where there would be like a picture-in-picture thing, where it could be slightly automated like that. But otherwise, yeah, like changing the screen requires like me pushing a button, basically, but.
Yeah, but you, so you could, it would just be a-
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys' other feedback. I, maybe, I don't know if it's for an exception, I agree with both of you. It's nice to have shorter meetings. A Cliff Notes version is also fine. I also, I don't know if maybe just for benchmarking months, maybe having the full board here, that is good. I mean, it's one of the best meetings, and we only do it, what, three, three times a year? So that would just, you know, maybe we'd skip curriculum committee that month just because it's so important. I don't.
So what I'd like to ask the members, all the board members, is if you've got questions or comments that would help Dr. Sprague and I in our meeting to guide our discussion as to where we go forward, email them to her, so that way she can have all that information. And these are questions about video, audio, all the above for this. So we can talk about that at our next meeting, and then she can then in turn talk with Dustin and the IT team. Makes sense?
I did appreciate the collaboration between the board and Ms. Doms, and Dr. Sprague was included in that, too. So I thought that was a really nice teamworking opportunity. I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Hearing no questions, at this time, the vote is open to receive the Curriculum Committee Report with all the discussion. One more time, JD.
It went, it was just-
Oh, it finally went. Anyone who want to change their vote? All right, the voting is now closed, Dustin, and the motion carries. And letter N on the agenda would be policy. And pulling up the policy meeting minutes, the whole meeting was dedicated, with the exception of the first five minutes, to the policy, page by page, of the Neola Update Volume 31, Volume 2, for both the policies as well as the administrative guidelines. Anything in particular you want to ask, Andy?
Yeah, I want to ask that at the next full board meeting, that we have a discussion on policy 0166, the title of which is Agenda. And, you know, in the past, I've been in the opinion, eh, I don't really care who's preparing the agenda. But this benchmark assessment thing has brought to my attention that it does matter who's preparing the agenda because I think there's things that we should see as a board. And I know that in the past, Dr. Sprague and Mary Kay have had this schedule of things, and so benchmark reporting would come up three times a year and other things might come up once a year. And so I know we have kind of moved to you, President Pyatt, preparing the agenda, and-
Well, that's just state statute, too. I don't have it in front of me.
Our policy states that the district administrator shall prepare, shall prepare the agenda. And so I think if you're saying it's state statute, we should have that discussion at a board meeting.
We'll have the discussion of Agenda Policy 0166 at our next Policy Committee meeting first, before it comes to the board. That's the way that it runs.
And then it will come to the board.
Yes.
Fair enough.
Dr. Sprague, if you'll add policy 0166 to the agenda. And Kristin, for our March, I think it's March 7, is our next meeting for policy. We will discuss that policy. All right, any other discussion? Dr. Bardo?
Just for clarification, because I'm in those meetings, when, when Mr. Pyatt and myself go to meet with Dr. Sprague, the agenda is already set by Dr. Sprague. And then occasionally, the board president will ask to add things, which happen. And for example, at this one, the only change that was made to this agenda was moving seven items into the consent agenda. Everything else was previously prepared by Dr. Sprague.
And I would probably say Mary Kay, correct?
More so Mary Kay.
Yeah. Because a lot of times, whenever we meet, Mary Kay gets called in or we open the door for clarification. Because a lot of times, whenever we meet, Mary Kay gets called in, or we open the door for clarification. Yeah. Any other discussion? Okay, the voting device is now open to accept the policy committee. Would anybody like to change their vote? All right, the vote is now closed, Dustin, and the motion carries. Item five is the adjournment. The next board meeting of education will be held on Monday, March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, seven PM, in this room. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made, all in favor of adjourning. Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. This meeting stands adjourned.